Five minutes after the start time. And I say this meeting, this is a workshop. There'll be no motions or seconds or votes. It's a workshop. And as such, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Hefner.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, staff. Good seeing y'all again. We're finally at that point now where we've taken the current numbers and been able to accommodate or account for all the transfers that have taken place in the district that are coded in your student database. Those transfers, basically, we're adjusting the numbers from the residential counts that we had and showing that if a student moved from, lives in the Drexel Zone, for example, and is attending a program at Plantation, that we're now putting that student at Plantation. So those numbers are going to match a little bit closer to the actual enrollment and refine our numbers a little bit. And as I kind of suspected, we were going to have to continue to do some additional tweaks or changes on the plan to start accommodating some of the overcrowding. Some that we knew about, like Falk. Falk was up in 800 numbers. We were kind of hoping some of those transfers would have brought that number down, but it didn't, not sufficiently. So we had to make some changes in Falk. Same thing between Plantation, Galette, Linden, and Drexel. And also some fine tuning between Burke and Deux-Sans and Westside. So those are kind of the areas that we've had to take a look at from the elementary side. So what you see on the screen right now is Plan Three, which we sent out about a week or so ago. I'm going to put up what we had discussed last time, which was Plan Two, because that'll show you really what the differences are. Probably, I think going from west to east, let's take a look at the tweaking that we did with Westside and Deux-Sans. Deux-Sans' numbers were low. Oh, by the way, let me explain the numbers that you see below the name of each school. The number in black is the pre-K five counts for that zone, as it sits right here. The numbers that are in purple is the pre-K four counts, because we have this issue that we'll get into, that we may have to keep fifth grade at the middle school level right now because of capacity issues. So I wanted you to at least see, even though Deux-Sans and Westside, you know, it's not a big deal, it is on some of the others, but I wanted you to be able to know what those numbers are. Pre-K five is the black number. Purple number is the pre-K four numbers. The charts that I provided on the maps also have that same breakout for both elementary and the appropriate grade spans for middle school. The black lines that you see here are the elementary two, Plan Two lines that we had. You can see here where we made some adjustments. The colored areas with Plan Three is. I'm going to go ahead and put the roads on so we can see it. Deux-Sans was low. It was still low. Westside was still kind of on the high end. Prairie picked up quite a bit, because now we're able to accommodate or account for all the kids coming in, particularly for the French immersion programs from other parts of the district. So their numbers went up a lot from Plan Two's numbers. So that means I had to bring their zone back down to basically where it is right now, which is Old Colony. But back to Alia, what I want to come into Westside and Deux-Sans is, instead of using Field Span here, I'm coming back here off of Anderson on the north end of Cameron and coming down to Cameron Street. And then we're picking up to Peak and coming in and picking up, basically, you have a fair amount of students living in the Mobile Home Park off of Field Span. And the left side of the road already goes to Deux-Sans. What we're doing is bringing in part of that right-hand side over into the Deux-Sans area to get the Deux-Sans numbers up. It's also helping relieve Westside some, so that Westside's a little bit more manageable. So under this configuration, Deux-Sans is now at 261, Westside's at 562 on a pre-K five span. For similar reasons, we came back and reclaimed some of the original Burke zone. The Burke zone came all the way down Landry, all the way over to Rue de Belletier. What I'm doing on there is, I needed to get the numbers up a little bit at Burke, and again, to help relieve Westside a little bit. So we're using Landry Road, which is our current line right now, but when we make that turn to head south on Le Villeneuve Road, we're picking up that Cooley that runs back there off of Au Jourant Trail, and we're just following that Cooley. It makes a good, nice boundary, keeps the subdivision together until we get to West Congress Street. And then from there on out, it's going to take in both sides of West Congress Street westward to the parish, as it was in Plan Two. So those are the two main changes on the western end. Adjustment for Westside-Deux-Sans, adjustment between Westside and Charles Burke. Prairie, we brought back down to its original zone, and we brought the area north of Old Colony to Ambassador Caffrey. We have that in Westside. So that helps balance those Westside numbers out. Let's take a look here at the other area on the east side that caused a fair amount of modeling, trying to get the numbers to work. The lines aren't as clean as I would have hoped, but the numbers are more workable. Biggest problem we have, now that we got rid of all those split zones with Falk, and we have those kids now, instead of going to five different schools elsewhere in the parish, they're all going to their, basically, their neighborhood school. Well, that just blew the population numbers out for Falk. You may recall, it was up in the 800 and some odd, 810, 820 range. So what we looked at doing, I say we, I met with some of the senior staff on this to kind of work through what comfortable numbers we could probably work with. Part of what we had to do is bring Evangeline down, further down. On the Plan Two, we had Evangeline coming down to Castile Street. What we did is we brought it down to Willow, on that area between Moss, that's basically where the mall is, and those streets right behind the mall. That area, we brought it down to go into Evangeline. But we also had to come in on the very eastern side, basically using Turlings Drive down to Carmel and out to the Lake Martin Road to pick up that very easternmost side of what formerly was going to, what was going to Falk or assigned to Falk under Plan Two, and have those go to Evangeline. I couldn't go to Boucher, because Boucher's number's already high, and we brought in and picked up actually some in Woodvale. We moved Woodvale beyond Evangeline's thruway a little bit and picked up some of those students there, because Woodvale, under this configuration, could pick up a little bit. So we were picking this up along South Magnolia, up to Pinhook Street. And that is the area that, where the Falk line is now. We're hoping to keep it here, but the numbers are just, were just too high. So between Evangeline and Woodvale, we're able to help relieve Falk. Now, of course, that has a ripple effect, in that it puts a bunch of students into Evangeline. Evangeline, I don't have too many options to go with. I've got Live Oak, which we did pick up a little bit of the area here, coming off of Ponte Mouton to Moss Street to the thruway. We took that out of Evangeline and put that into Live Oak. Well, Live Oak now is at 781 under this configuration. I really can't give them any more than that. I don't have anywhere else to go, other than maybe Heights, and Heights is already at 612, which is pushing the limits on Heights, on Carrington Heights right now. So I really can't go there. So that led to the decision, or the suggestion or the recommendation, that what we probably need to do is look at making the change on the fifth grade. If you look at the number on Evangeline, they're on a pre-K five, they're at 716 students. If we keep the fifth graders at the Acadian Middle, where they've been for probably two decades, we're looking at 599 students over at Evangeline. Evangeline can handle 599. Evangeline probably cannot handle over 700 kids. So that is one area that is really driving this reconsideration, at least for the relatively short term, keeping fifth graders on those middle school, some of those middle school campuses, or keeping them where they have been in the past. Until such time that the facilities can get, be adjusted as you go through your building program, keeping that in mind, that you want to be able to keep them at pre-K five, six, eight, and nine, twelve grade spans. As you work through your facility plans and your buildings and what have you, you can make those adjustments as you go. It's just really hard to make some of these changes when the schools have been built, they've been operated with five through eight, for some cases 15 years, in some cases over 20 years. They've been operating that way. So those facilities have been set up that way, and that's, it's hard to turn on a dime and say, okay, we're going to move all the fifth graders out and be able to have the facilities accommodated. The numbers just aren't working. That brings the same thing over to Westside and Scott. Of course, with the flood, that brings in maybe not as big an issue, because now there are, a lot of them are going to be on the Scott campus anyway, through temporaries. But it may be something that we may want to look at, keeping the fifth grade at Scott Middle as well, because that would bring Westside to 465 versus 562 on a pre-K five basis that we have right here. So I just want to let you know a little bit about that dynamic on the fifth grade, that didn't just come out of the blue. There's some real serious issues with the facility capacity that's driving it, because that brings us to the next part, which has been the area that we've all been kind of fighting with. And that's all the growth over in the south part of the parish, particularly on the southeast part of the parish. Before, we had the adjustments on the transfers, which you have in black is the Plan Two. Once we had those adjustments, we had to start making some changes because of all these various movements within the district, in and out of the residential zone. First problem was Plantation. If I kept this area in Plantation, it was bringing Plantation to just under 900 students. Plantation can't handle 900 students, doesn't have the facilities for it. That's why you see the line now, or the shaded area being in green, you see that area now pulled back some, and Drexel's picking up this area. There's a large apartment complex back up in here, and I'll put your roads back on so you can get your bearings. This is Verrot School Road right here. What we're trying to do is come in on Pilett and come in back between these two subdivisions. There's a group of subdivisions here on the east side, or west side, and there's a group on the east side. I'm trying to come in and try not to divide those two subdivisions. So that's where I'm, kind of hit the sweet spot on the numbers with Plantation. It brings Plantation down to 693, which they can, they can handle. But in turn, it brings Drexel up to 910 on a pre-K five basis. And they can't handle 900. It is having trouble handling 750 that we had originally on our plan. So that's also driving the issue of keeping the fifth graders at Broussard Middle and making Drexel for now a pre-K four. So Drexel would go from 910 to 776. It's still a little on the high side, but I believe they can be able to accommodate that right now. They cannot accommodate 910. Likewise, we had some adjustments between Galette and Linden. Right now, with those changes on Galette, you may recall, Galette used to actually come all the way up to Pinhook. All this area between Verrot School Road, Camellia, Tolson, and Bonnawell used to, currently, right now, today, is in Galette. So we pulled it back some. We're now using Camellia and Tolson as the line for Galette. But even then, for pre-K five, that puts them at 903, which is close to what their enrollment is now. I believe their actual enrollment's actually up a little bit over the 903. GT Linden, though, was having some issues on capacity. So that is why you see a change from Plan Two with GT coming up the Youngsville Highway to La Nouvelle. That's where originally we're coming down, coming down Bonnawell over to Fortune Road. We had to carve that area back out of GT and put that over into Galette. And then come in with GT Linden to pick up some of the Galette zone south of Fortune Road. And here, because of the subdivisions and the counts, it was really, there really wasn't a whole lot of options. There is a Cooley, though, that runs, coming off of Iberia Street, it runs back behind these subdivisions. And essentially, following that Cooley up to Fortune Road, and then using the center line of Fortune Road over the Youngsville Highway, those numbers seem to work within the capacities of GT Linden. It brings GT at 890, which is close to what they are now. If fifth grade was moved to Youngsville, though, you see in purple, Galette would drop to 766, and GT would drop to 759. So that would give some relief if fifth was moved over into the Youngsville Middle School Campus. But following that Cooley, if you followed it exactly, that Cooley actually bisects Saddleback Circle and Copperfield Way. I have encompassed, however, that whole subdivision. I didn't want to use strictly that Cooley. The Cooley is our general guide, but we want to make sure we keep all of the Copperfield area in and also all of Saddleback Circle in. I didn't want a bus to be running halfway down the street, picking up, and another bus passing, yet to pick up the other half. It didn't make any sense. So I wanted to make that real clear when it comes time to implement the maps. So in a nutshell, those are the primary changes that we've made on the elementary side. Again, the numbers have been refined, because we now have a good handle on transfers, and we're using current enrollment. So this is about as close as we can get, as far as the numbers go. I'm going to open up to any questions you'll have on the elementary plan.
Mr. Hefner, I know this is almost impossible to judge, but like the numbers at Falk, there's, and I'm just using a small sample here, there's four kids that live on my street, Saturn Drive, and I know not a single child goes to Falk. They're all in a separate school of choice somewhere. There's no way for us, which I know, it's a huge venture, there's no way for us to really see what those final numbers will be when day one rolls around, because we have school of choice about to roll around January, kids will be choosing. So is it possible that, well, I know it's possible, a lot of schools, as predicted, will be a lot less, will we face some overcrowding at some other schools that we hadn't possibly bargained for? Like, my son goes to Boucher, so his one seat is not accounted for in the Boucher numbers.
It is now.
Okay.
Yeah, as well as the ones that you mentioned that might live on Saturn that are going to school of choice.
Yeah.
Their numbers are counted in the school they're attending, the school of choice that they're attending.
Okay.
That's where all of these are. They took those kids that are transferred and took them from their residential zone and count them in the school that they're going to now.
Okay. So...
So you will have some change, but I don't know if it's going to be any different than you have any other year.
So these aren't just the rezoning?
No.
Where your address, physical address is?
This is physical address, adjusted for transfers in and out of the zone.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hefner.
Mr. Hefner, on the Green Tea Linden and Ernest Galette zone. I'm assuming that there were that many more kids in the purple area that you took out of Green Tea Linden than that are in the green area that you added to Green Tea Linden?
Yes.
To make that difference.
That's why I ended up having to come in and use that Cooley, because those two blocks were too big on their own. And I say blocks, I'm talking about these large areas between Bonnawell and Youngsville Highway.
That's going to leave Ernest Galette at what number?
903, approximately 900 students on a pre-K five, or 766 on a pre-K four. And you're about nine, I think about 920 right now, I think, on the, 987. Okay. So you're just barely under 1,000 right now at Galette.
What we pointed out to Mr. Aloisio told me, I'm going to say this number, what was it? A thousand, there we go, 1,025 at Green Tea today.
Yeah, but Green Tea will go down to 890 with this.
I was just going to point out for everyone, that's the school we rezoned.
Yeah.
Last year.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, I'm sorry, it goes down to 890 if you leave fifth grade?
Fifth grade is 890 at Linden and 903 at Galette. If you move fifth grade, it'd be 759 at Linden and 766 at Galette. Really depends on how much room you want to leave for future growth at the elementary side. Thank you. Let's go ahead and go to the, on the middle school. Let's take a look at that. All right, I'll take the roads off for clarity's purpose for a moment. Not a lot of change on the middle school. You can breathe easy on this. It's basically the same as Plan Two, with the exception of, remember the adjustment we made between Westside and Charles Burke? We're just having the Judes line follow that now, so we don't have a split zone. That is really the only change that we have with regards to that. The heavy line right here going over, all I did was refine my line a little bit, so it wasn't sticking out quite as much, it's more how it looks than, both sides of Congress still are going. But that's really the only change on the middle school side. But let's take a look at the numbers on the, I'll take these off so we can see these numbers a little better. Let's take a look at Acadian. Acadian, if we kept it as a 68, would have 327 students. If we keep the fifth graders there, then it brings it up to 463. So you're better utilizing an existing facility. Rather than overcrowding and having to bring additional portables in at Evangeline, you can keep your fifth grade there now, for now, and save that money on having to move portables around. And again, one of the things we want to try to do is fully utilize our facility capacity, and this does that for our middle schools. Ideally, we'd like fifth grade to be on the elementary side, but right now, it's just, it's just going to be hard to turn that on a dime and have that work out. Let's take a look at Broussard. Broussard, right now, under this configuration, would have 490 six through eight kids. But if we kept the fifth grade there, then you have 669, which is much closer to the capacity of that facility. So same thing as at Evangeline holds true with Drexel. Instead of bringing a bunch of portables in to accommodate these kids, when you've got empty classrooms now at Broussard Middle, it makes sense to keep your fifth grade at Broussard Middle. At least for the time being, until adjustments can be made to the facilities. If Youngsville Middle was to have the fifth graders on its campus, right now it's 579 under this configuration for 68, it would be 806 with a fifth through eighth configuration. Also brings in the issue with Egger Martin. If we kept Egger Martin at 455, then that would be the six through eight. Broadmoor, if we move the fifth grade over there, it has 729 pre-K five kids, which is more than it can handle, or it's not set up right now to handle that. If we kept the fifth graders at Egger Martin, we won't overload Broadmoor, and we'll be at a comfortable range with Egger Martin at 634 on a five through eight configuration. So those are what was kind of driving that. Scott, you can see on a six through eight configuration, you have 498 kids, 500 kids. If you keep your fifth graders on that campus, like they have been for a good 20 years, if not longer, then you're at 825. That campus at one time was 1,100 kids. So that's well within the capacity of Scott Middle School. So that recommendation in your committee workshop with regards to your fifth grade, that's what's driving this. It's your numbers and where you have your space available. In particular, whether you're doing all of them, that you keep them all, you keep fifth grade on all your middle school campuses that already had them, or if you do them by the selected ones, you know, the ones that absolutely have to have it, though, in my opinion, is Acadian, Scott, Egger Martin, and Broussard. Because your elementary schools in those areas are not going to be able to handle the fifth graders. They just don't have the capacity. And it may just be easier right now just to revert back to where you were the previous year with the fifth graders that were on the middle school campus, go to those middle school campus. You just may need to make some accommodations for those teachers that did shift over this year to the elementary level, to give them time to shift their classrooms and get them set back up, back on their former middle school campus. But that is, that is the driving force between the recommendation. You see the numbers there, but as far as the line changes go, it's just a line change between Scott and Judes to accommodate the Burke change. Any questions on middle school?
What's the capacity for Alamo?
Yeah, they're currently at 1,100. That's, I mean, short of adding more portables there at capacity. But they're right at 1,101 on October 1st.
Is it feasible or even possible to, where it benefits us the most, to keep fifth graders on a campus versus not everywhere? Is that a possibility that you guys are looking at?
We've considered it, but based on our discussions with Mr. Hefner, the other problem is you could keep fifth graders at some of these elementary campuses, but you'd look at moving portable buildings at about $70,000 a pop to accommodate the enrollment. So that was kind of the reasoning for our agenda, is not only the facilities aren't prepared, but to prepare them is going to cost us a lot of money in terms of moving portables.
Well, I'm trying to support the rezoning. My question is, when it comes to like Alamo, if we're going to have five through eight there at a possible 1139, I mean, at what point are we, too many kids, and we're going to disperse those fifth graders between four elementary schools or three elementary schools?
I would make one point about Alamo, in that recall that I think it's no more than 250 of that 1139 is actually zoned students. You know, the vast, vast majority is performing arts students.
For fifth grade, it's 110 at LJ Alamo that are not performing arts, 110.
But those aren't fifth grade?
That's fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
That's fifth graders.
Okay. And what's the zone total? The zone total is? Yeah, for the actual zone for Alamo. I'm just trying to figure out how to alleviate not going too far above 1,000, because I, I mean, it seems like we're already over capacity there.
Dr. Chasson, the last time we discussed that it was right at 75% school of choice, 25% zone.
That's 25.
Those are the numbers I remember.
Okay.
That's roughly, that's about right.
Okay. Just something to toss around. And then, is it possible for grades six through eight, something we've talked about before for STEM, what's the school capacity for STEM, six through 12? If we could open up grade 1,500?
For David Thibodeau?
For David Thibodeau.
Well, we're in the process of doing that annually.
Right.
We added the extra seats this year, intend to do so again next year. It's about a three-year process to build out to capacity.
Okay. Because if we could help alleviate some overcrowding by, I mean, if we're opening up that much more slots or that many more slots for STEM, then that's pulling kids, that'll decrease numbers at other schools as well.
Well, you're correct. It would have that benefit.
Just something else to look at. And lastly, okay, never mind. Paulborough is a high school campus anyway. That's okay. All right.
Mars?
No, I think we're already in the process of getting Woodvale set up to accept the fifth graders. So would the fifth graders remain at Woodvale under this plan?
I'd say that's going to be between board and staff.
That was going to be our recommendation to the committee.
Okay, so the fifth graders would go back to Woodvale, but then some fifth graders would, from other elementary school zones, would go to Alamo? It's K34 right now, and we're already in the process of, I've seen that they've laid the concrete for a new drive and have started that process.
That drive is just a bus drop-off.
Just a bus drop-off?
It's... And members of the board, you are correct in assuming that if there is a particular school, given the... And members of the, of the board, you are correct in assuming that if there is a particular school, given the circumstances, we could exclude it from reverting back. So, it just, it needs to make sense that we're not leaving kids unnecessarily in temporary buildings if we have permanent classrooms available at a middle school.
After the, uh, construction at both Youngsville Middle and Green Tea Linden, and since there are no more portable buildings, what is the maximum capacity of each one of those campuses?
Linden with the portable buildings currently?
Without.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
So, I think Linden is approaching capacity right now, I mean, they are...
So, a thousand?
Linden has, I'm sorry, forty-five portable classrooms.
Oh, Green Tea Linden has zero portable classrooms.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was totally, I'm sorry, I apologize. Forty-six permanent, we subtracted out some for special education.
It's a thousand kids.
Youngsville Middle?
They have forty-two permanent classrooms, uh, some half-sized classrooms, so they're about forty-two times twenty-eight.
It's eleven seventy-six, but it's, it's probably, it's a little over a thousand is capacity.
So, the current proposal, Youngsville would be at five seventy-nine unless they took fifth grade back, then they would be at eight oh-six. Green Tea Linden would be at eight ninety unless they got rid of fifth grade, they'd be at seven fifty-nine. All configurations are under the maximum capacity. Do y'all expect to have the same number of grade levels, including kindergarten, next year as you have this year?
The same enrollment numbers?
Yeah, basically, yes. Do you expect kindergarten to have seven, um...
Sections?
Sections?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I don't think it's going down, and I don't think it's actually gonna stay level, I think it's actually gonna increase. That's what the trend has been, is the increase, and that's why, one reason why we're looking at this, to try to build into the capacity that your existing facilities right now through the zone line changes. It's also why you've been taking up the issue of possibly another elementary school on that corner of the parish.
Correct.
Mr. Lachale?
It's in.
Mr. Hefner, I see with Judes, six to eight, it's three hundred and eighty-six, and then you have five thirty-five. Would that be moving, if, would, that be moving, uh, fifth graders from both Burke and Ridge?
Uh, yes, if you, under this configuration, if you move the, uh, fifth grade, it would encompass all your elementary schools within that zone, which would be Burke and Ridge.
So, what would that do to the portable buildings at Ridge that went, that are now being used if fifth graders were moved to Judes?
Ridge has currently twelve, thirteen portable buildings, twenty-four, twenty-five classrooms of portable buildings. Potentially, yeah, you could move some of those, some of them, what's happened over the years, they've kinda become landlocked in terms of their placement.
There's a capacity at Judes?
Judes, we have, we have twenty-two permanent classrooms and three portables, so what, twenty-five? Approximately seven hundred.
At, at, at three eighty-six, that school would be grossly underused with portable buildings at Ridge, it's just, I'm just throwing it out there.
I was gonna skip it, but I'm just curious, what's the capacity at Paulborough?
Paulborough, we have sixty regular classrooms, six portables, so sixty-six. The thing you gotta take into account with them is because of the gifted program, a lot of those classrooms aren't gonna have twenty-eight kids, but... If you just do sixty-six times twenty-eight, you're looking at eighteen hundred, but there's no way, I would say closer to eleven hundred when you start taking into account the gifted program.
That's why I wasn't gonna question it, 'cause it used to be a high school campus, uh, eleven hundred. The grades they're moving for, like, I don't know, Scott, well, no, I guess that wouldn't, wouldn't count, I have to look at the elementary school. Okay, quick question, the, for, for, for Paulborough, six to eight, when it goes to five to eight, that is zoned five to eight kids? Or is that gifted fifth grade as well? And I know we, that hadn't been discussed yet, but I'm just curious.
If they're coded in the system as being gifted and attending Paulborough, they're assigned to the Paulborough numbers.
Okay, so a fifth grade, so where would those kids be leaving? Where, so sixth grade gifted students that are at Paulborough, they went to fifth grade where? Woodvale or Alamo?
Uh, it'd be your fifth grade elementary programs.
Yeah.
Where you have your gifted fifth grade, where you have your gifted elementary programs, they would feed into that at the middle school level.
And then I, oh, I'll, I'll wait for that answer.
And that may be one of the areas that you probably wanna keep your fifth grade where they are.
Yeah.
Rather than moving.
That's what I was, 'cause I was...
I really think on your fifth grade issue, I think you're really gonna need to take a look at each individual school and school zone and figure out what's appropriate.
So, members of the board, we, just to be clear, we are not recommending that all middle schools become five through eight?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, no, I know.
I, I was just, it concerned me when we were talking about fifth graders for Paulborough.
No, I know, but that was one of the recommendations, that's, that's my question.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, we did have, uh, as an item, fourth grade gifted students who originally attended Woodvale Elementary and were assigned to Edgar Martin this past school year, we wanna continue that, but just, we weren't...
Okay.
And, but back, you're right, you are correct, on April sixth, we did talk about Paulborough in relation to limiting the number of schools those kids would attend. Nothing came up with this particular item.
But I, I guess, I'm looking at that item as it figures into Paulborough's getting a fifth to eight, but I'm trying to figure out what school is, would be losing those kids. Let's say if we did decide to put fifth grade gifted at Paulborough to join their fellow brethren, then...
I would say, just, uh, without me doing more research, I'd say Edgar Martin.
Edgar Martin, okay. And if fifth grade moves from Acadian, from Evangeline to Acadian Middle, is that every, is that zoned kids, or is that? And I know that's a tough question, is that zoned kids, or is that the immersion kids?
It's primarily, well, it'd be zoned kids, but there is, but there, there's a smaller, there's a smaller number of immersion kids. They would, they would move also, I would recommend, the fifth grades, but it's not as big a number in comparison to like Prairie.
I think it was like twenty-eight kids when my daughter was there.
Uh, Ms. Samick would like to correct me.
The fifth grade immersion program for French would stay at Evangeline.
It would stay at Evangeline, okay. Okay, and, that's it, I can ask other questions at later point, thank you.
Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to chime in on, on, on the discussion. Uh, first of all, the, the, the end result at Acadian Middle, uh, I don't think Acadian Middle has any temporary buildings. And my question is, will it remain that way?
My records show them as having two portables, four classrooms at Acadian Middle.
What's their current enrollment right now?
Three hundred and seventy-eight on October one.
What's their capacity?
Uh, thirty-two regular classrooms plus four, uh, portable classrooms, so thirty-six. On the upper end of thou, a thousand would be extremely, yeah, I mean, that's if every traditional classroom has twenty-eight kids in it, which is, that's a little unrealistic, but if you really just had to put kids there.
What's, what's staff reasoning for keeping immersion, just, you wanna keep them at K, K to four, and since they're already there, keep them at?
Right, they do a lot of collaboration. Last year, the fifth grade immersion program was at Evangeline, it was not at Acadian Middle.
Right, okay.
So, if, if you, you, you may, you may not be utilizing, correct me if I'm wrong, under these numbers here in front of us, you may not be utilizing temporary buildings at Acadian. Your, your number was based on temporary buildings included, right?
Yes, sir, yeah, so potentially his number, you might not need those portable buildings.
A lot may depend on what the condition of those portables are, 'cause we have some portables that have been part of, they've been parked in those places for a long time, and they literally can't remove them.
You can't move them, not only 'cause they'll fall apart, but they won't meet code. Once they've been grandfathered in, you're alright, but if you tried to move that to another site, if you could move it without it falling in on itself, it wouldn't meet code.
They do use those portable buildings, though, I've been on the campus, they do use them, but I mean, this was two years ago. I remember seeing kids coming out of the, okay, alright.
But even with fifth graders there, they should still have a lot of elbow room.
They should have a lot of room. We have to figure out a better way to utilize more of Acadian Middle. If it is possible, that, let's say, let's just decrease that by twenty-five percent, say it's seven fifty, if we only got four seventy-nine, or we got kids at, at other schools that are eleven hundred, a thousand, nine hundred, we've got, we've gotta figure out a better way to utilize. I'm sure Mr. Moore wouldn't mind, I don't wanna speak for him, but I'm sure he can handle it.
He'd like more kids, I'll speak for him.
Along with kids come more teachers and counselors and things of that nature.
You know, the interesting thing is, if I could just pick up the dot where the schools are and move them to where I need them, it'd be a whole different story. But moving the dot and moving the school are two different things. That became apparent pretty quickly as I started working on this, is that we really need to move some schools around, but they were built for where they were needed back then, population shifts. Any more questions on the middle?
Uh, one thing I would like to, um, propose for Acadian Middle, maybe in the future, is a school of choice.
Yeah, I actually spoke with Mr. Craig about that, just spitballing, and then we were right on the same page, yeah.
Any other questions on the middle school plan?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Here none, let's go ahead and take a look at the high school plan. Alright, you'll see that we have a couple of changes on the high school plan. Let's start from the top of the parish here. With the changes in the, um, accommodating for the transfers, Caron Crow numbers were coming down, uh, a fair amount, uh, which gave me the opportunity to use Interstate Ten as the primary, um, line between Caron Crow and the neighboring school districts, I'll put the streets on here for you. So, basically, everything north of Interstate, across the parish, north side's Caron Crow, south side will be either, uh, Acadiana, Lafayette High, or Northside. So, those will be the other three zones bounding on the south side of I-ten, nice clean line. Keeps the north side, we pick up all of the, uh, the Falk Zone and all the elementary and middle school students that come in below I-ten. They all go in into, uh, Northside, gives Northside some, uh, some good numbers, brings Caron Crow's numbers up a bit, and makes for a clean line. We didn't really have that many students up in this area that were going to Northside, even though they lived there, they weren't necessarily going there. So, it, it made it appropriate to make that line at I-ten. The other area is the Broadmoor area. This is one of those situations that it's kind of a fifty-one, forty-nine percent type of, uh, situation. On one hand, we, Plan Two, we were looking at moving that, going ahead and move that area over into Como to, uh, bring the Lafayette High numbers down. Uh, that would've brought you around twenty-one seventy, thereabouts. Uh, keep in mind, these numbers do not, for Lafayette High and Como, do not account for the three hundred and fifty or so performing arts students, 'cause they'll be moved next year, they'll transfer next year. So, if you wanna get an idea what it's gonna be, then you need to deduct about three hundred and fifty students from Lafayette High and add them to Como. And that'll give you Ball Park or what those numbers are gonna be, so Como will be about fourteen hundred, Lafayette High will be about twenty-two something. Um, Plan Three went ahead and put the Broadmoor area back into Lafayette High. We're making changes on that zone line, plus we're moving a major program there. So, the thought process was, let's not move a couple hundred students yet until we determine whether we have to yet. So, it was decided that we'd go ahead and keep them, uh, going into the Lafayette High area, and let's see what Lafayette High settles out to over the next year or so, as far as numbers go. It may be a two-step process for Lafayette High. Uh, we'll see what the numbers are, and if we need to make adjustments at that time, then the board will have some options that they'll be able to consider. So, Plan Three's major change really boils down to the area north of I-ten going to Caron Crow in its entirety and maintaining Broadmoor feeding into Lafayette High. Those are really the only changes between Plan Two and Plan Three.
Then Jenny?
I'll beat Mr. Lachale to it. So, uh, the twenty-one seventy from last, from Plan Two, and the twenty-six thirty-six, of course, I'm speaking about Lafayette High, the twenty-six thirty-six for Plan Three, they both included the three hundred and fifty performing arts students, if you're correct?
Yes.
So, four hundred and thirty-four high school students live in the Broadmoor and Rivers Bend?
No, we also had other transfers coming into Lafayette High that were not accounted for under Plan Two.
Ah, okay.
We have other programs there at Lafayette High that they're coming into.
Okay. So, that's, so that's, it was under two hundred in Broadmoor and Rivers Bend, right?
It was thereabouts, yeah.
So, we're, we're talking about another over two hundred students that were not accounted for in certainly not schools of choice. What, did you send, like, did you add in gifted, or was it?
It's gifted, it's Health Academy.
French, uh, French.
The World Language.
Well, those were all in the schools of choice, right? Like, you didn't just add schools of choice into this revision, did you?
This one accounts for all of that, plus other transfers, not just school of choice.
What are the other transfers?
Other transfers, we have, uh, uh, we have special ed transfers, we have some hardship transfers.
ESL?
Uh, ESL transfers, um, some of the other programming that we, uh, that we have at the various schools. So, any of them that had a code in your database, and I keyed that into what school that that program was going to and added those numbers to them under Plan Three.
You got an idea of how many?
Uh, no, I didn't do a, uh, specific count on it, um, let me see if I may have...
Hardships to Lafayette are, are very limited, yeah, it takes a situation where the service can't be offered anywhere else because it, it's so crowded.
Let me see if I may happen to have, um... I pulled out some of them as I was making the changes on there. We have some coming in, World Language Academies for Chinese, Spanish, French, English Academy, Career Tech, your Moss Prep, Business and Finance, Legal, Infination Technologies, Biomedical, Language Immersions, Environmental Sciences, and your Arts Academy. All those I broke out as they were coded, the ones I didn't separate into a separate layer was the, uh, the hardship ones. And mostly, I did that mostly for privacy reasons, 'cause there's not that many of them. But on any of those, if you wanna see the distribution of them, you know, we can do that, I'll just give you an example. You wanna see where J. Wallace James kids are coming from, there they are. That's, so you're running buses for all of that right now, all over the parish, but it's a great program. Also, one other thing too, on the, um, on the socioeconomic, we started using the, on, with Plan Three, we went to the state code now for the, uh, economically disadvantaged, so that's what the ED is and the percentages. Uh, since we're not collecting the data now on free and reduced, and the state has a formula, I'm assuming it's probably following the federal standards for determining socioeconomic, that we're, uh, we're using those percentages now for the, uh, to show what the, uh, economically disadvantaged kids are. Uh, one other thing too, uh, you'll notice on Southside High School, when we were first talking about this last year, we wanted to try to get the numbers down a little bit closer to a thousand. we wanted to try to get the numbers down a little bit closer to 1,000 in order to be able to give us some additional growth. Right now, if you had nine to 12 open up, you'd have about 982. So we're around that 1,000 mark right now. Some of that's because you have kids that live in that area actually going elsewhere to other, maybe Lafayette High, could be over Acadiana, Business Finance, you know, taking advantage of one of those schools of choice. So South Side, you're going to have some, I, I think you're going to have a pretty good transition. You'll start with nine to 12, but I think within that three-year period that you're going to go from opening to a nine to 12 configuration, be about a three-year period. If those developments continue basically the way they have been the last couple of years, then you're going to be getting closer to that capacity. But at least you have some growth in there. But they're not going to be hanging from the rafters when they, when you hit that nine to 12 enrollment. So we do have some of that capacity built in. Any questions on the high school plan? Here none. That's, that's what I have. The maps are posted on the website and the charts that have the, the breakouts on the various grade spans, as well as the socioeconomic data. And if I have any questions between now and the meeting on the second, just let me know. Otherwise, this will be what will be coming to you on your agenda item for November 2nd, for your consideration.
Is this being aired?
No.
No, it's not being aired? Okay.
Mr. Angel. Before you dismiss, I have one announcement. So we had talked about a ribbon-cutting ceremony for LJ Alamo Cafeteria. I think I had originally proposed the 10th, November 10th. There was a conflict for at least one board member. We're rescheduling the ribbon-cutting ceremony for LJ Alamo for Wednesday, November 9 at 2:30.
If somebody could mention the, the website where a parent can go to type in their address?
If you go, uh, parents, if you go to www.lpssonline.com, the first banner you'll see on that is Know Your Zone. You click on that, you type in your address, it predicts your address, it'll shoot out your elementary, middle, and high school. It's very convenient to use.
Yes, sir?